Good afternoon, space session, Mayor, City Council meeting, 4:00 P.M. Wednesday, May 12th, 2021, City Hall complex. A call has been to order, please rise for the federal agents. Madam Trump, can you please?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. The two hundred and forty thousand for which it stands. One nation, under God, united as one. There we go.
Here. Executive session, President. No. Members of the City Council, we're not going to be going into executive session. We're going to get a report, number four, from the acting city manager. An update on city manager's search for CPS recruitment. Mr. Thompson, please.
For some reason, I just feel better up here.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. Online here have Kristin Navarro from CPS HR Recruitment. The recruitment company will be engaging to find a candidate suitable for our search on our next city manager. She has a line of questions that she would like to ask the entire group as a whole, so we can pretty much get an idea as to what council believes the right person fitted for this job should entail. Qualifications, knowledge, any of that nature. I think, yes. She is online right now, and she'll be available to go through this course of questionings. I have the actual questions she'll be asking being printed out right now as a reference tool for everybody for notes or what have you. With that, I'll turn it over to Kristin. She will go through the whole process. It's pretty neat, pretty simple, and she'll ask questions on our recruitment profile and also on our brochure showcasing the city. Kristin?
Yes, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome, very good. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'm looking forward to working with you all. So as Robert mentioned, I can walk you through the process briefly, and then if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, and then I'd like to get your input and feedback on different priorities of you guys, so that we make sure that we're looking for a manager that's going to be a good fit for you all. So first, I'll walk you through the process. So I've been working with Robert and staff on gathering profile information to work through the development of the marketing brochure, which is a marketing tool that we use advertising the position, and that's where I'll get your assistance with tonight, get your feedback and input on information that could also be in there. So once we get that developed and formulated, you all will have a chance to review it and make any necessary changes or anything that you see fit, and then once that is finalized and approved, then we will launch the position and open it up for applications. So I can, and then once we get all of this done tonight, you all send a draft timeline so that you kind of have an idea of what that's going to look like, and if we need to tweak things, we can, nothing is set in stone. So once we launch the position and open it up for applications, then that's when we start our marketing and sending out, you know, direct targeted emails to potential candidates that are currently in the city manager realm. And then we'll also be posting the position on different advertising outlets with a link to our recruitment site, and then providing the brochure as well, so that you can post it on your website. Once we, that's open for thirty days. Once we go through the process of that initial outreach on the candidates, then I will conduct a resume review and do screening interviews with the applicants. And this is where I'll go through and have a very comprehensive kind of phone screening with the candidates who are going to, who meet the ideal profile that we discussed tonight, and go through the qualifications, make sure they're meeting them in own qualifications that's described in the brochure that we're going to go through tonight as well. So from that, the screening interview, then we will have a candidate review meeting, and you will be able to review any of the candidates that we're making recommendations on as far as kind of which candidates rise to the top. So we'll put them in groups, like group one and group two, and kind of narrow it down to a shortlist. And then we'll do interviews, typically the semi-finalist interviews are virtually via video, now that we're in this video realm, but some cities choose to do it in person, so it really just kind of depends on where you guys are at on that. So we'll narrow it down in that meeting and then have semi-finalist interviews. From the semi-finalist interviews, we will do, narrow that down to finalists, which is typically three or four candidates, and those candidates will be invited for in-person interviews by you all, and then if you wanted to have a committee or some panel, we can kind of go through different interview options at that point as well. So that's kind of a very high-level overview of the process. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question for Mr. Thompson. Sir, I had a question for Mr. Thompson, but he just stepped out.
Oh, okay.
And Mayor, this is regarding the contract. I remember that we had a meeting and we talked about the contract, but I don't remember that we asked anything on that. Is that the...
On the contract itself, Mr. Thompson, ask, just got a question for you.
Sorry, I apologize. We're having some technical difficulties right now. I don't know if it's possible to take a one, two-minute break just to get that fixed, Mayor, if we can?
Yeah, go ahead. He wants to talk to you about the contract itself.
We can address that one, Councilman.
On the contract, I know that we talked about it a couple of months back, but I don't remember passing any, passing the contract by the City Council and Mayor.
Right, so I took the liberty of engaging CPS HR to get to this, one of these true crucial points that we have, one of them being hiring a city manager. We were able to locate funding through our city manager's budget, and then the remainder would be projected for next year's fiscal budget. So I engaged CPS and submitted a contract to get forward and move as quickly as we could through this process. So I do apologize for that. I think it's just in the best interest to move forward with the engagement, but however, I'm here to take whatever guidance from council to a pause, retract, or move forward, and I do apologize for that, but we just needed to move forward on something.
Do you have a copy of that contract?
Yes, I do. I can certainly email that or get some printed out.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I was going to ask the same question. So you took it upon yourself to hire this firm?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the reason that I put it on the, on the report, that I wanted an update on the city manager search, the CPS recruitment, was because I hadn't heard anything about it, and I wanted to know, wanted to get an update on it. So you just take it upon yourself to make a decision to hire this firm?
Yes.
With the council approval?
Correct.
Anybody, were you going to say something, George?
Oh, I was trying to use it to turn on your mic. And I'm, you know, I talked to Mr. Thompson on this also, and, you know, I knew that we had talked about it, we had discussed about looking for the fundings, but we had, you know, the council never voted on it. But, you know, right on, what, so you took basically the fundings coming out of the city manager's budget?
Right, so we do have, Mayor, members of the council, I apologize, so we do have some salary savings because we've been without a city manager for some time. However, because we're in the middle of, you know, the latter part of the fiscal budget and the new one starting over, we can acquire those other remaining funds through next year's projections under professional services or what have you. So we, we are comfortable with the funding allocations for this project, and I think it's probably the best idea to have something in play to hire a city manager as quickly as we can. So those were the driving factors in this decision.
Where is our intern HR on this? Have they not looked into any local or, you know, I thought we're looking into trying to get somebody local, looking for offers of people that were in, maybe in-house, people that were, that were, you could say, able to get this position in-house with the other requirements and...
And that, Councilman Mondo, is absolutely true. Anybody who's interested internally that meets all the requirements through the charter is absolutely invited to attend and be part of the process. Kristin has made that abundantly clear with all of us, so anybody who, who wants to can absolutely apply for the position as well.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Thompson, so if somebody in, a resident from Nogales is interested in applying for that job, do they have to go through this company, or do they just go through human resources?
So human resources can accept the application, however, it's totally up to what council wants to do at this point. If we want to pause with CPS, stop, or just move away from it, we absolutely can. But anybody can apply, they can apply through HR. In fact, I received an application a couple of days ago on an individual who meets the requirement, and that application will be forwarded to Kristin and her group and her team to get to the right candidate. What, I guess what I'm trying to point out here is, we've tried to recruit somebody locally, or let me rephrase that, we've tried to do this in-house, and we certainly have succeeded in finding candidates, however, it hasn't necessarily mean that we found the perfect fit for the city, which is why we're moving towards or gravitating towards this recruitment form to be able to find that one person or select few individuals who apply for that position. Not saying that anybody who's ever had the position was bad in any way, I'm just saying that we've gone down that road more than once, and I think it's probably best to go through a different avenue with individuals, staff like Kristin and her team, to be able to find that perfect person to have, to be in that position. And they are recruiting locally, they are recruiting with the criteria we provide to them, so it's still open for anybody, just through the firm. They will do everything, they will do our backgrounds and everything.
Can you describe the perfect fit?
That's what we're convened here for, to be able to find those ideas from our governing board, our governing body, and be able to give us what that perfect person would be. It's seven different opinions, we're going to consolidate that and work and create that profile. That's the whole purpose of going down this avenue, because if, if we go and ask all seven, we'll have seven different opinions. However, if we ask all seven, and we get those seven opinions and create one good one, we have a perfect fit. At least, that's the theory behind this.
I have another.
Go ahead.
I remember back when we had Mr. Shane Dilly, when we tried to find a perfect fit for the, for the, any director's position, he would hold a director's meeting, and we would turn in our own personal opinions, you know, on what we, we considered a perfect fit for that department. Is that the way we're going to be doing it this time, or...
Well, actually, what it is, the way Mr. Thompson wants to do it, and, and I believe that this firm is basically, it's important that my fit for the city is different than your fit, than anybody's fit, okay? Some might say he has to be bilingual, some might say he should be from the border region, some might say should be local, some might say should be the state of Arizona, you know, it all depends. The last time we had this, ninety people applied. Out of ninety, twenty-two ended up on the list, and out of twenty-two, two ended up on the list. And the majority of them, they applied, they have some experience, but were not the fit that we wanted. Now, I don't expect a list of ninety. So if that's the case, I'll have human resources do it again. We have to find somebody that, that's for the job. So we have to follow the city charter. Let's start with that. Five years' experience in government, municipality government, five years.
That's what the charter says?
That's what the charter says. Mr. Massey?
I will go get the charter, Mayor, I don't want to, I guess on that, so.
No, get it, please. And it has to be municipal government, not the manager of Walmart, not the manager of an airport, or a firm, or anything, municipal government. Let's not make this mistake again, members of the council. I was part of making the last mistake, and I don't want to do it again.
And Mayor, if I may, just to interject a little bit here, so the purpose of the firm is to not end up with ninety people? The purpose of the firm is to get at the max thirty, and Kristin, correct me if I'm off track here, and to bring that down to a handful, handful as in three, where we will interview, actually, Mayor and Council will interview those individuals in person. Before we get to the select three, we can certainly do more interviews virtually. So let's just say, as an example, we end up with thirty applications, we screen those, or the company screens those, we end up with ten. Those ten can now be queried by Mayor and Council and select three more, or three out of the ten, and then that's when the in-depth interview would take place in person. That's the goal.
Yeah, but the ten that's selected by this firm, or whoever does it, doesn't, I don't care, the ten that's selected by them has to be ten that fit the criteria for Nogales.
Exactly.
Not one, two, or the ten.
Exactly, sir.
And they could be bilingual, yes. They could understand the border region, yes. They could understand the culture of a border region, which is very important, yes. Should they be from the state of Arizona? To me, yes. Not California, not Washington, Arizona, or the border region that understands, that been around the border. A deputy city manager out of somewhere in Laredo, McAllen, that has the capability of being a city manager in Nogales, you know, something like that, that's, that's my thinking of having one. You could all think differently. Mr. Massey?
Yes, sir, let me, like, I'll read what is in the current printed charter as section seventy-fourth, I'm mentioning seventy-five point one, because people would be familiar with that section, although it's gotten renumbered.
Okay.
But it hasn't gotten republished with the new numbers yet, Mayor, so I'm still going to go with seventy-five point one. It says qualifications of city manager. City manager shall be chosen by the council on the basis of his executive administrative qualifications. He shall be required to have a minimum of a four-year bachelor's degree in public administration or related fields. The council shall establish additional qualifications for selection of the city manager, such as, but not limited to, his years of experience in city government. The city manager need not, when appointed, be a resident of the city or state, except as may be otherwise provided by law, but must be a citizen of the United States. He shall, upon appointment, become a resident of the city. So I would refer back to that second paragraph that says the council shall establish additional qualifications. So I think that five years is based on the previous...
That's been the previous, because I've been part of selection of the city managers in the past.
Right, so that's...
It's been five years, minimum. Unless you want to change it to one year or no years, then that's what you're going to get. And, and for directors, for directors' positions, we can change, and we've done it before, and you were here when it was done, to see if we want somebody equivalent either or not having a bachelor's. But for directors, not for appointed positions, that one, we have to follow that city charter. So I'm not going to say, change the timeline, I, I, if you want to change it, change it, but I'm not going to change it, because I don't think, you know, we're going to end up with the same problem that we did last time, and I'm not going to make that mistake again myself.
What was the problem last time, Mayor?
What was the problem last time? No experience.
In what?
In city manager, position managerial, municipal, nada, no experience. That was the problem.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So a couple of things, I still, I'm going to go back to the comment I made earlier. I, in my opinion, I strongly believe that it was sort of underhanded. I feel that we should have made that decision to hire this firm. Having said that, this firm is costing the taxpayers, regardless of where you find the funds, thirty-five thousand dollars, is that, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I think that that decision should have been made here as a council, a mayor, and I want to make that point. The other point I want to make is, we also, as a council, have to work with who we hire as a, as a city manager, assuming it's the, the right fit, meets the qualifications, minimum qualifications of a BA for your college, and so forth. I think it's important that we also, in this, in this session, clearly outline the expectations we have of the, of the, of a city manager that fits the city of Nogales. This is a lot of money we're spending, again, taxpayers' money, and that we should make sure that we are in this boat together when we choose the, the right candidate. So in choosing the right candidate, does this firm give us a number of applicants, or does the city management choose the one, the applicants that we will select?
So Kristin, did you hear that by chance?
Yes, sure, so I want to pause for just a second and comment that, one, if, you know, a city manager retreat, as you just stated, is, all council needs to be on board. And while there's most certainly going to be differing opinions and different things that you all feel is most important in your next manager, it's so important for the success of the recruitment that you all come together on your vision. So there might be some different aspects of a city manager that, or about their background or their experience that you differ on, however, the vision that you guys have for, or that you all have for where Nogales is going, where you want it to go, it's difficult to bring in a new manager if there's not clear direction specifically on that. So I would say that we absolutely want to have a consensus as best we can among Mayor and Council as far as what you're looking for, and what, what you need to happen, certainly will abide by charter and anything legally that, that's stated, that the manager has to have. As far as other experience, we do our best to make sure that you're going to have somebody who is going to be a good fit for the organization. So they might have all the experience in the world, but we want to ensure that they fit the organization specifically. So I wanted to say that first, and then, second of all, as far as the contract goes, if that's something that needs to be approved by council, then we are more than happy to pause anything that we need to pause, so that you have an opportunity to review the contract and make sure that you're comfortable with it. Again, it would be very difficult to go through the process without everybody on board.
I'm not sure if you answered the question, will the applications, everyone that applied, be reviewed by council and mayor? Every application?
Yeah, sorry, I wanted to get through that first part first. So all of the applications, all of the resumes that come through will be reviewed and ranked, and then we will have a candidate review meeting, and you'll have the opportunity to review the candidates, and I can also provide you, you know, the candidates that don't necessarily meet the minimum qualifications based on what we decide those are as well. But yes, I mean, we'll, we'll rank them into groups one and group two as far as who's best fit in the qualification, and then you'll have the opportunity to review all of those, and then you all will decide. So this is all your, all your decision, though certainly we're not making any decisions for you. We want it to be your decision, because you're, the manager reports to you. So that's absolutely the case here, is you all will decide who meets the requirement of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Kristin, say it.
Kristin.
Kristin, Councilman Bohor, what, what is the time limit, you know, for finding ten qualified people for this, for this position? And do we have a time limit on how many days is this contract will run?
Sure, so the, the exact, I'd have to go through the contract language to see the exact, if there's an exact date in there for expiration, but typically, a recruitment, a full recruitment, from opening it up for applications and receiving resumes to candidates having a start date and, and a decision being made and approved by council is anywhere from twelve to fourteen weeks. Once we develop the profile brochure, we open it up for applications to receive resumes, and we receive resumes for, for a thirty-day period. So during that thirty days, we're marketing this position and actively looking for those path of candidates as well. So that's kind of the first part, and then as far as when we meet for the candidate review meeting and deciding semi-finalists and then finalists, and when to do in-person interviews, we can tweak the schedule on that if, if we need to, to, to work around what, what's available for you guys. But it's totally, I mean, typically, the average is going to be twelve to fourteen weeks on any city manager recruitment.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I just have a comment. I don't mind spending the taxpayers' money, especially when it comes to being thirty-five thousand dollars. My question, I'm more concerned of how many times have we paid out to former city managers that didn't quite fit here? I think that's, that's my concern. Spending thirty-five thousand dollars, it, it is, we have a track record of choosing the wrong city manager. So at this point, I don't have a problem spending, or that our acting city manager took it upon himself to hire that, this company, because he's just moving in a proactive way. We were going to end up anyways, taking this direction anyways. So my biggest concern is not the thirty-five thousand dollars we're going to pay out this company. My biggest concern is hiring the wrong person, and this person not working out for the city of Nogales, we, then we have to fire him, and then we have to pay out whatever is left on this contract. And I think that if we go back, the previous one and the one before that, and the one before that, how many times have we paid out?
No, the other one, no, just the last two.
Just the last two, uh-huh.
Yeah, because the other one was the best, Mr. Dilly.
So I think it was more than thirty-five thousand dollars, right?
No.
Right?
Well, yeah. No, actually, that's what it was for the last one.
Plus vacation, because we had to pay out his vacation.
Vacation.
Oh, plus, so I don't, I don't...
But that was because screwed up on the contract, okay?
So I don't, I don't have a problem spending that money.
Yes.
I think it's in the best interest of the taxpayer for us to take this direction. That's just my comment.
Thank you very much, and actually, what you said about Mr. Thompson taking, taking the lead on this, I think it was the proper thing, because we don't, we don't have that much time to be waiting, you know, to make a decision, and thirty-five thousand dollars is under his, that he can spend that money, actually, even though it's, it's on something, because at the final thing, the selection is done by the city council, it's not by the city manager, even though he selects a firm. But my concern is, right now, is that, that, you know, I mentioned some things that I would like to see in a city manager, and, and, but, but is it possible that you might find somebody like that? Maybe, but I'm going to tell you one thing, that when Mr. Dilly was hired, a city manager, I was in office at the time, Mr. Dilly understood Spanish, by the time he left here, he could speak Spanish, remember? His English, his Spanish was a little broken, but he could speak it, but he was a city manager, the real thing. That's what we need, a city manager. He came here from... He came here from a position that he was deputy city manager. And, you know, too bad that that administration did not want to renew his contract, whatever they did. But I wish he would still be here. Because that's, that's what we need as a city manager. Somebody that's involved in economic development, is involved with the community, is involved with all the clubs in Nogales, is involved with the council, gives direction to the directors from the council. That's what you need as a city manager. The Spanish, you know, we can, that's all right. If the person is really good, he'll learn. And if he wants to, he's really going to get involved in the community and get involved with the culture that we have here in Nogales. So, if somebody applies, Chris, it's Kristen, no?
Kristen, yes.
If somebody applies in that position, they have to understand Nogales, okay? Whoever applies, not just because, hey, we need to fill a slot to take to the, to the city council of Nogales. He needs to do his work and identify to Nogales. Not only look at what we have as a council, but look at what we have as a community, and how important it is for us to, you know, have a vision of where we want to take the city of Nogales. That's what a city manager should do. And should be able to work directly with the city council and with the directors in the city that are under him or her, whatever. But that's what we need to do. You know, that's why it's important. If you have a comment right now, any one of you, what you would like to, to highlight as a city manager? Go for it. Go ahead. Yes?
Okay. Mayor, what I would like is, Ms., I don't recall you.
Kristen.
Ms. Kristen, can you?
Yes, sir.
Can you please state the instructions that you have from the city as to what requirements we have in looking for a city manager? Are we...
Sure, as far as the requirements of the candidates?
Yes, ma'am.
Have a set, a strict set of rules or anything yet, and that's what our discussion is tonight, is getting your input and your feedback on what you believe is important for the next city manager to have. So, I have some questions to, to go through. If you want me to go through those questions, I'm happy to. And then, as you answer them, we can, we can discuss around that. But it's, I don't have any specific set of rules or any specific requirement yet.
I don't know what I said. I should have had this one last week.
So, Kristen, I just handed out the eight questions that we have emailed.
Okay, perfect.
So, they have, Mayor and council has on it.
I will say this to you earlier. It was mentioned that it's better to get your, your feedback, you know, all together. And that, that's completely dependent upon your, your preference. So, if, if your preference is to, the sheet that Robert just gave you has my email address on it. If your preference is to look through these questions and give it some thought and write your answers out, then you are more than welcome to do it that way. And then, your answers would be, you know, content. I'm not going to assign a certain answer to a particular council member. So, your answer, you're confidential with me. I'm not going to share your answers. I'm going, I'm going to incorporate your feedback into the profile brochure. I'm also happy to have phone conversations individually with each of you to go through your expectations and your request for the next city manager. I know that you may all have differing opinions, but sometimes, as, you know, as I speak to you, it's, you know, a common vision can form, and, and we can at least get all of your feedback and input into that profile brochure to make sure that we're incorporating everybody's feedback. So, I just want to lay that option out there. If you'd like more time to really think about it with these questions in front of you, then that's okay too. I, I want to make sure that you're comfortable with the process.
Yes, go ahead.
Kristen, in, in your experience, or the experience, the company's experience, have you ever, not hired, but have you ever recruited a person for a director's position, a city manager position in a border community?
We've done recruitment, not specifically in a border community. We've done several recruitments in Texas. I can't think off the top of my head. I can give you a list which of those cities were on the border. We've done work, a lot of work in Arizona, a lot of work in California. So, we've done work nationwide as far as recruiting and, and other services that we offer. But we understand the, the unique need of, of a border community.
I have a...
Go ahead, Councilman.
Kristen, Councilman Bonilla, out of all these cities that you don't work for, how many of these cities have, the majority have been Latinos? Like Nogales?
Sure, I can, I can run a report for you. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Vice Mayor, you have anything?
No, I'm, well, you know, I really think the job of doing this first number, first of all, it's the acting city manager. Then, show, show us what they have available. I mean, we're open-minded. I mean, depending on what we have here and from us, we'll figure out. I mean, I don't have to say right now I want it bilingual. I want it with a lot of experience. Who knows? Maybe they can find the, the right person for the job, regardless of what I think right now.
Go ahead, Councilman.
A quick question, Kristen. This is Councilman Diaz. You know, we have a cap on the salary for the city manager, and we want the correct fit. We want a good city manager. Is, with the budget we have available for pay for a city manager and the vacation, severance pay, all that, all the package, do you think we can get a pretty good city manager with what we have to offer as far as pay and benefits?
I don't have a city manager contract in front of me, what, what your city manager contract would be. I know there's a two-year limit or terms, or two-year contracts on that. But I don't have in front of me all of the details in the city manager contract. But as part of the negotiation process, as we're talking with candidates, when we narrow it down, we can, you know, we're happy to help with the negotiating process on what's included and, and what's typically not included. We use a lot of resources in determining a city manager contract, and we can, you know, look at other contracts for similar-sized cities, for cities of similar, cities of similar locations and things like that. So, we're happy to provide all of that for you. But I don't have exactly what the city manager contract for Nogales will look like in front of me. So, I can't say that, I don't want to speak to the contract without having seen it.
Yeah, because that, that will, I'm sure that will limit the amount of applications you get when you put out there what we are willing to give the city manager and the responsibilities that, that he has to take care of here. So, you know, if you, if you put the package together with responsibilities, pay, and what we're looking for, that will take a lot of the application applicants, well, not a, maybe a lot, maybe a few, but that will narrow down the, the prospects of applicants, I would think. What are your thoughts?
Are you, I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Yes, yes, Kristen, yeah, that was for you.
Yeah, I, I, again, I, I don't know what, I don't know what the manager contract, or I have not seen the contract, so I don't know what that, what that looks like. But we're, I mean, it might, that might be part of the discussion is making sure that the salary is competitive with the market. But again, that's, there's different ways to market a position, but salary will definitely be a key factor in, in somebody moving there. I would think you also want somebody who's very seasoned as a city manager. So, I, I mean, there's, there's very, there's varying degrees of, you know, what, what's going to be most important as far as the fit. And each candidate's going to be different as far as their requirements for a job that they would, are willing to move for if they're moving, or if you have local candidates. So, again, it would, without looking at the contract and knowing everything that's in there, I, I don't want to speak to whether or not it's a good contract.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong. I think at, at one point in time, I know you have Mr. Massey perhaps, I know the Vice Mayor, Councilman Diaz have, at one point, been in this process for prior city managers. And I could be mistaken when I say this, but the recruit, for lack of a better term, typically provides a contract which is hammered out through legal. So, the, the contract in itself, Kristen, we don't have something set in stone.
Doesn't exist.
It's pretty much fluid between the city and the applicant. So, that, you know, depending on which side of the fence you're looking at, it could be really good, or it could be something you want to know ahead of time. So, just putting that out there.
Well, the only thing that they should know is... Go ahead, Kristen.
Sorry, I was going to say, the contract is a council decision. Most certainly. So, what's included in the city manager's contract will be up to the council and include anything, of course, that's required of the city charter. But outside of that, that's a council decision.
Right. So, basically, basically what it is, fringe benefits and stuff like that get hammered out prior before the contract makes it to mayor and council, and the ultimate decision is...
Basically, basically, what's important here is the salary range. Will they accept the salary range we have? Because a contract, that would be taken care of if a person is selected. It's, it's the salary range, you know, that, that, that might not, might not be suitable. One of the things that I, I think of is, is finding somebody that's probably a deputy city manager somewhere that wants to be a city manager in a city with, with experience of municipal, municipal experience. That would be the best, one of the best ways of finding somebody. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you need to be a city manager somewhere. It just means that you need to have municipal experience. And at least in a deputy position, something, something like that would probably be a, a good fit that could probably be accepted, you know? I, I don't know, I don't know where you would take this. For example, if we were to fill out this questionnaire at all, at all, we don't fill it out. Could you figure out what we need for a border community?
I would, I would not feel comfortable moving forward with a recruitment without the input from council. I think that's really important, because the manager's going to be reporting to you.
But what I'm saying is that with you doing your homework, couldn't you know exactly what we need in a border community?
I can do my homework and make recommendations as far as fit. But I, I mean, truly, the input from council is absolutely necessary for it to be successful. I think that, you know, I can most certainly work with my experience, and I've done several city manager recruitment throughout the United States. But it's truly going to be successful with, with, has higher chances of being successful with council input. It would be difficult to recruit a city manager without your input.
No, I understand. But the input, what I'm just trying to say is that if, if, if your firm hires city managers and you've done, done it a lot, I'm just wondering if, if you had a list of people that, that you think would fit the, fit the city of Nogales, border community, you know, and major Hispanic and, and our city budget, you know, sixty-nine million dollar budget, and what we pay as city manager, and how many departments we have, how many employees we have. Well, all that information that you could probably get if you Googled or you went into the city page, could you come up with a list?
We, yeah, I mean, we would advertise the position, yes. And we would recruit candidates, yes.
Okay, so, what you need now is just to, for us on this questionnaire, is just to, just to make a, you know, finalize something that you can, a brochure, something that you can give out to prospects. Is that what it is?
Right. And, and we want to make sure, you know, as I'm screening the candidates, I want to make sure that I'm thinking through what you have said you're looking for. So, you know, for example, the culture of the organization is so important. It's, I would even venture to say it's one of the most important things. And so, we want to find a candidate that's not just a great city manager, but a candidate that is going to be a great city manager for you. And that's going to be really important, which is where having your buy-in on the candidates as you review them is going to be so important. If it's a, you know, there's, in a purpose world, you know, you would all agree on exactly what you need, you know? Typically, that's not the case. And in most, you know, and not everybody's going to say we need this exact same thing. And, and that's okay. There's going to be differing opinions. But above all, we want to make sure it's somebody who's going to fit. And so, while we do our research and, and understand, you know, the, the organization, and, and we can get salaries and benefits and, you know, the schools in the city and, and different things that we're going to put apart into making that profile brochure, the most important piece of that is making sure that the candidate's going to fit in well with you, since I'll be reporting to you.
What do you think, Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, members of the council, it's far-fetched to be able to create a recruitment pamphlet or even find people, applicants through the firm. I don't see a doubt in that. Number of reasons. There's, we can certainly filter any information Kristen or team may need through HR, which they will be plugged into the process. We can certainly be resources to them as to our dynamics in Nogales, our culture, the needs that we see. And basically, all that could be voiced from this panel through us to them, if that's something mayor and council is inclined to do. The first thing is to find somebody that's going to be the right fit for Nogales, where we are not going to be going through this process three, four, or five months down the road. I think when we, when we talk about taxpayers' money, I think we've already spent enough of it on severance packages. So, to move forward with a reputable firm such as CPSHR, or any other one for that matter, I think that's a better fit for us to, to venture into than going into the same path of insanity, and we all know what insanity is, is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. Here's an opportunity to do something different. Here's an opportunity to bring to light an individual who will meet the, the needs of the city, meet the, the criteria we want to create. Here's an opportunity. We have the ability to, to use it. We have the ability to pay for it. We have the ability to run with it. Their website is full of other information from improvements. They've done a lot in Texas, and we all know Texas, especially in the southern border, has a high Latino or Hispanic heritage. I really have no doubt in the right person. I really don't have any doubt. Could we get into bargaining, basically, hey, individual who's not in Arizona, however, they're in New Mexico, California, or Texas, who has everything minus ever living in Arizona? And that individual might be the, the right person or is willing to relocate as required by charter? We don't know. I just think that right... charter? We don't know. I just think that right now we're, we have an opportunity and I, I think it's probably best to move forward with that opportunity. That's just my two cents on this.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. One thing I do recommend is that, that as soon as you start the search on this, we as a council need to be informed, not, not 14 weeks later.
Right.
You know, we need to be informed, you know, ready, how everything, you know, because if, if, if you get to a certain point and you get to a certain amount of, of, of candidates for the position, we could say, you know what, show us what you got there and see if we can, so we can go through the process and not wait three months, four months if possible. You know what I mean?
Right. So for that part, and, and Robert and I have talked about this as well, once we open the position up, I'm going to send a weekly update on here's how many candidates we have, here's what the candidate pool looks like, and, you know, here's what states are from or, or however you want to receive that information. So you will be updated throughout the process. And again, I'll, I don't want to decide any internal working. He's on Robert's behalf, but I'll absolutely, and you're free to reach out to me as well, any of you. You can have my email address, my cell phone. I'm happy to talk to you anytime throughout the recruitment and we'll absolutely provide you updates throughout the process and, and want you to be involved through the process.
Good, because that way if we select any of those, we can interview at the time and not wait till the very end.
Well, we might, the screening process is in place to make sure that all candidates go through the same process. And so that would be really important to make sure everybody's comfortable, rather than just jumping to interviews before all of the screening has been done.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yes, Ms. Navarro, going back to what the mayor said, if, if the process is going to take from 12 to 14 weeks and we already have an executed contract, right?
Yes.
When would this process begin? And the other thing, once you start getting the applications, is there going to be a cutoff date? You know, like if you got 20 applicants or 10 applicants in, in, in the first 30 days, you know, are you going to keep receiving applications until when?
So the deadlines for reviewing resumes will be 30 days after when we, you know, when we open it up and post the ads and start advertising the position. As far as when it starts, I mean, it's, it's, I already started as far as gathering information to develop the profile. Robert and his staff have sent some things over already as far as information about the city and some pictures to include in the brochure. So that process has actually already started. And then the process for involving you all and getting your input is tonight and, you know, throughout the next week if you want to go through the questions and answer them. So it, it has started, but it's just not open up for applicants yet. But hopefully we can get that posted and open in the next week or two so that we can get the process going.
We could. Okay. My other question is, when, when you start recruiting, are you going to consider any states past Texas or are you going to concentrate on the Southwest or how are you going to go about it?
Well, we, we can focus where we place, all of our recruitments are nationwide, but we can certainly focus our direct outreach and our more aggressive recruiting to different regions by, you know, posting the ad in, in different municipal leads or something like that with different states. There are several different ways to market the position that certainly will, will have a nationwide reach. But, you know, we want to make sure that they're, they're a good fit. So we'll be focusing on regions where that would be the case, where they're going to be a good fit.
Okay.
But I mean, I'll say, I, I live in Texas myself and I, my experiences in local government in Texas and finance, I actually have worked for a couple of cities in Texas and most recently the city of Fort Worth. And so I, you know, I've, I've worked with many councils and I've worked in, in these positions before and, you know, we've, I've seen city managers come to Texas for North Carolina who have been extremely successful. And those are two very different states. I've seen city managers go from Texas to California and be very successful. So it's, you know, sometimes it'll surprise you that what you think is going to be the best, but sometimes it's standing out quite about a little bit and actually a different.
And, and my other question is, you know, with all this propaganda on, on the news about the border crisis and what's happening with the borders and the border fencing, do you think you would have problems trying to bring a city manager to a border community?
I think, I think any city manager recruitment honestly right now is a little bit challenging. It's, local government is a tough place to be, whether you're an elected official or a department director or a city manager. So for the right city manager that is willing to change, that will, I think it'll be a challenge, I do, but I don't think it's a challenge that Mr. Hannibal.
As long as you don't ask for combat pay. Go ahead.
Yeah, Christine, this is Councilman Moldonado. And that's, that's one of the things that I want to comment, you know, we're the safest city in the border, I think. You know, you got to know us to know what you're looking for. You know, our contract is, is harsh, I think, you know, but basically, you know, our, I think our monetary payment for our city is a very good payment for the cost of living in the city. We're not a, you know, nothing close to Northern Arizona or California where you're paying $2,000, $3,000 for apartments and stuff like that or rent. Our cost of living is very reasonable in this city. You know, just, I just want to make sure that legal and, and you have all the documents, all, all of the requirements that our charter has. So we followed and, and, you know, dotted all i's and crossed all t's and make our, you know, like I said, our salary in our city, people need to be more, get as much knowledge to our city where it's a very friendly community. It's, you know, we, we have probably five to one law enforcement agencies because we got a lot of federal, state government, all types of law enforcement agencies in this city. You know, we're only a 22,000 city population. You know, our workforce and personnel is challenging, but I think it's no, nothing out of this world. You know, we are an older city that we have infrastructure and needs to collaborate with parks and, and public works and stuff like that. You know, unfortunately, we're, we're in that timeframe where a lot of fixing up is, is necessity. But, you know, you, you really have to know this city to know what, what, what we want and what we need to get the right person. But I think as far as our workforce, everybody's workable. Everybody, everybody puts in their, their time and, and extra time to get things done. But, you know, it's somebody that's hungry enough to come and do the right job for the city. But, you know, you as a recruiter must know what you're looking for to know what you want to get. And that's what I want to, want to make sure that you know what you're looking for to get the right person.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're, we're certainly making sure that we have that information and we're working with Robert to do so and you all as well. And that's the whole goal of getting your input is to make sure that part of us knowing your city is to see it through your eyes also. And so it helps hearing you guys talk about it and knowing exactly what you're looking for. And, and that's our goal, is, is to get as much feedback from you so that we make sure that, that it's somebody who's going to fit with you all.
Just go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Christine, I just have a question. Saying in the event, you have three candidates that you think they're, they're the proper ones for Nogales. Would you just go ahead and send those or would you wait for more? If you already, say by, by the end of the second week, you already have three candidates that you, that you feel they are the, the right ones for Nogales, would you just go ahead and send those or are you going to wait for more?
Good, good.
So we'll look at all of the candidates at the same time when we're in the candidate review meeting.
So Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Vice Mayor to kind of chime in and Kristen also correct me if I'm wrong. So if we do have three applicants, I think it'd be a, a decision of this body to say, let's go and grab more or let's go with what we have. However, if we go with what we have, we're finalizing the process. So we would have to be really keen on allowing it to go further if that's what we choose or council chooses, or we put an end to it there and just go with those three finalists. So the answer to that question is, it depends on what we're seeing or what council's seeing and outweighing what could potentially happen, which we really don't know. So it'd be up to Mayor and Council on that point.
We know.
Right.
We're going to know by then. Say for example, if you already have three candidates in two more weeks, then you'll let us know?
Absolutely. We, we would be having weekly conversations back and forth. We would be informing Mayor and Council of everything that's happening with the recruitment process. The ultimate goal, and perhaps this lets a little bit, sheds a little bit more light on everything, is to, to leave the recruitment open minimum 30 days. And as John says, we'll circle the wagons and see how many applicants we have. If we're comfortable, we, as in Mayor and Council, is comfortable with the amount of candidates, then that's when the screening starts. The goal for, for Kristen and her staff is to bring three, the top three after we've, after we've screened them, after they've gone through a preliminary interview that Mayor and Council can also partake in or should partake in. And then we go for the personal aquí estamos type of interview. And, and, and that's the goal we're, we're striving for. However, is there a possibility that we would only get five candidates? Absolutely. Is there a possibility that we would get 40 candidates? That's what we're hoping for, right? But they would screen everything with the input we provide. So this could take a couple of weeks or it could take several months, depending on the pool.
Several months, no?
Sorry?
Not several months.
Well, for, you know, 16 weeks is four months. So, and this could take 12 to 16 weeks.
So if we take, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So if we, we would go, start the process next week, do you think by August, what is it, the 12th, we would have something?
I'm, I'm confident that, I, I think it's September, right, Kristen, what the target date is? And the only reason we s-
I think that-
And that's prolonging the whole process. Yeah. And that's prolonging the whole pro- in other words, that's taking the full 16 weeks, right? That's if we have to take the full 16 weeks. For all we know, it could be something within a month or so. We don't know, because it all depends on how many applicants we get. But initially, the recruitment opening, we're hopeful to keep it open for at least 30 days and then see where we're at. And if we got a good pool, adelante, let's move forward with every-
Because the thing is that like the Vice Mayor says, if, if you have somebody that applies first-
Correct.
Uh, two or three of them and they're good, and you hold them for 16 weeks, they're going to be gone.
Oh, they're going to go, exactly.
They're going to go.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
That's why we can't, we can't sit here for you to come up and, because we're going to get the last batch because the others are gone. That's what happened on the previous time. The ones we were about to call, they were called by human resources, they had a job already. And that was with about a two or three week span. So if you let them, the first ones that apply, and you let, have them, do you think they're going to wait for three weeks for them to, for Nogales to make a decision? No, they're not. They're going to get a job.
And Mayor, and I apologize for interjection. We certainly can engage these candidates as they come in and say, hey, this is the process. We're looking at this type of turnaround. Field them out. And if we see a need that we need to stop it, grab them, and interview, then I think Kristen and her staff can-
I think we need to, we need to have that understanding like Hector said that if-
So part, part of my job as the recruiter is making sure that the candidates understand the process just as well as you do. So the candidate experience is just as important to me as your experience in selecting a candidate. And so I will be in communication with each candidate as I receive their resume. And I will be communicating with them regularly. Most city manager recruitments are going to take this time period. So I, I will be getting information from those candidates like that. If they're actively looking for a job, then I'll want to know if they're in any other recruitment for other organizations. And they don't have to share that information, but if it's information that I know, then I will certainly take that into account. But it's not just going to be, we get an application and then don't call the candidate for 30 days because the initial screening of the candidate will happen before the interviews happen. And so I'll be in communication with the candidate early on in the process.
Okay, go ahead.
And Mr. Thompson, you know, I would recommend that you would be communicating with us on a weekly basis on, on what's going on. And if we have to meet every week for this, you know, let's do it. Let's not wait till the first week of the month.
Of course.
We need to move on this fast.
Yeah. So definitely, Mayor, Councilmember Horkes, absolutely. I, I think we're, we're in a process where we're fluid and we're moving forward. And this dialogue had to happen before we actually run. And that's the goal at this point, you know, steadily run forward with, with the process. So weekly updates, absolutely. Those can happen. How many applicants we have, if we need to shut it down. You know, Kristen and her staff will absolutely let us know if there's a select few applicants that meet the requirements this council. And hey, if that's the case, then we're halfway through the game already. We are there already. It's just a matter of screening and that face-to-face interview, which I think is very, very important.
Okay.
We're, we're, we can only do virtual so much.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Christine, Councilman Diaz again. I've been looking at your community input questions. Have you done any, done any, or have you had the opportunity to do any research on Nogales so you can get a feel of like what it is to be here in Nogales?
Yes, sir. And we've gotten a lot of that information from staff as well as far as, you know, specific things or opportunities that are, you know, the, the candidate might want to know. We ask that information about stakeholders because it's important for us to know your perspective as well. So it's, it's just gathering as many perspectives as we can to make sure that we're not missing anything.
Yes, thank you for the answer. We have very capable staff here. And another point that I would like to make, I agree with all the questions from my colleagues, the answers, everything is going very well. We are the gateway to Mexico. We are a main port of entry with Mexico. Nogales Sonora is our sister city. Over here, we're 22,000 people that live here. Nogales Sonora is about 500,000. Nogales Sonora is having their election in September for governor, mayor and all that. And we do work together on a lot of, a lot of things, a lot of events. And that's another important thing that our, our new city manager will have to be doing is, is communicating with Nogales Sonora. And we do a lot of things together. We, we, we try to get the, the Mexican travelers here for economic reasons, economic development and all that is very important to us because we do depend a lot on Mexican traffic for economic development here in Nogales, Arizona. a lot on Mexican, uh, traffic for economic development here in Nogales, Arizona. And likewise, Nogales Sonora depends on a lot of the products we, we sell here in Nogales, Arizona, which is our tax base, and that's what Nogales lives on, is on sales tax. So I just, I just wanted to throw that comment out at, at you, and see what your thoughts are on that.
Absolutely, I would say economic development is, is key for, um, your next city manager to, for them to have an understanding of, um, economic development overall, as well as, um, as it relates to your community. So I 100% agree, and, and I think that's one of our target areas, is to look at managers who have experience with economic development, and in, uh, not, it may, it might not be specifically a border city, but certainly that would be, I think, on the case, um, if we found somebody with economic development and the border city aspect of it. I, I do think that's important, and I think it's important, knowing, um, the, the familial culture in, in the city, that it's important for a city manager to be part of that culture, and to really become ingrained in the city and a, a, a positive number of the community. I think that would be very important for you all as well.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you focused on economic development. I think you're looking at my notes here, right? Yeah, so, um, sure, sure, Christine, I'm sorry, Christine, this is Lisa. I'm gonna be filling out your stakeholder input questions, for sure, and sending them in, uh, to your, um, address that you've noted here.
Wonderful.
Okay. Looking forward to that. Yeah, that's, um, I like the questions you're asking. Also, I think that he or she, um, can also possess, should possess, um, you know, strong listening skills, and builds trust with the community, and also, of course, the, the employees of, of the city of Nogales, and is, and is inclusive. Um, I think that, uh, that person should be, um, able to collaborate with the stakeholders here in Nogales, that's really important, to get this economic engine going. Um, and I did wanna ask Massey, Mr. Massey, a question. So the minimum requirement for this job is a BA?
Yes.
A bachelor's, bachelor's of science or art.
Or a related field.
Okay, that's the minimum, though.
Yes.
Okay, is that true for also directors?
The directors have, um, their job description, minimum requirements are set by council, and they have changed over the years.
Yeah, so the, so the minimum requirements can change for the, uh, city manager, too?
Yes, that's what I read in the charter, that says that the council shall set additional requirements, and that's where the five years of increasing, uh, leadership and management experience has come from.
So, the reason I'm asking, so in fact, the requirements for city manager can also be changed in terms of not requiring a BA?
No, that's in the charter.
So that's in the charter, however, it's not in the charter for the directors.
For the five years is not in the charter, right. But again, that's something for the council to develop, and decide what your candidate should be, should possess.
But just to, for clarification, so the minimum requirement asked for the charter for city manager is a BA?
Yes.
The bachelor's?
Bachelor's.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So those requirements are set in your charter, and I don't have the language in front of me, but is, is there language in the charter that references council's ability to, um, I, I know it mentioned that they can set additional requirements, is there language in there as far as council being able to change the requirements, or forego the requirement?
Mayor, can, can I just chime in on that one? So by charter, Kristen, um, it, it said that, um, a bachelor's degree is necessary, um, that's the minimum requirement, uh, that cannot be changed unless it's a vote from the pub, or by the people. So if, if council were to lobby something like that, it would have to still go to the people for a vote for that change.
Correct.
What the charter says, that council can add additional requirements, um, not modify the minimum. So yes, council can add.
That's what I'm thinking, correct.
Yes, go ahead, Mr.-
Yes, Mayor, I'll forward to Christine with the approval of council, the charter provision that I read, as well as the ordinance that you adopted last month regarding, uh, the administration of the city, because there's a lot in there regarding, uh, the manager's responsibilities and authority. So I think that could be helpful as far as a reference material in the recruitment process.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
Members of the council, are we okay? Mr. Thompson, you ready?
I'm ready.
Let's go for it. We don't have to vote on this. Unless Mr. Massey wants us to vote on it.
No, I think the, uh, the plan is for the council members to-
Forget the information and get this-
Get the information directly to Kristen, and I will get the materials to Kristen that I mentioned.
Perfect.
Does she have any questions for us?
Thank you.
Christine, do you have any questions for, for council by chance?
I think these are it.
I don't have any questions, I, I just wanna say thank you, and I know that, um, this was a huge decision for your community, and I do, um, you know, I, I've been there, um, not in a elected official, but I've been, um, in peace where we're looking for a city manager, so, uh, please know that I, it is my utmost desire to make sure that we find the right fit for you all, and I want you to feel comfortable and confident in that. Um, I, I do my job because I love my job, um, not because it's, it's, I don't, I don't see it as a job, I truly enjoy what I do, and working with local government, um, it's, it's my passion, and so I, I do look forward to working with you, and I, and I hope that you, um, have an awesome experience through this process, and just know that I, I truly do wanna find the best fit for you all, um, and I, and I care deeply about, um, your community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
One more question, Christine, uh, uh, on this questionnaire, do you have it online?
The, um, the, the input questions?
Yes, the, the-
No, I, I can, I can email you, email it to you.
Would you happen to have a fillable type of form, um, Christine? I think I received a hard PDF copy of it.
Uh-huh, yeah, I think you need a Word document.
Okay, good.
All right. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Albert, thank you, and-
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, thank you. Meeting's adjourned.